Hello, everyone. Just to go over the protocol again. The timekeeper will apprise candidates when they have fifteen seconds left of their allotted time and a red colored stop sign will be displayed to apprise candidates that their time has expired. Due to the limited time that we have allocated for tonight's debate, I ask all candidates to not exceed their allotted time period. As the saying goes, less is more. Should a candidate go beyond their time period, the moderators and timekeeper will have the debate sponsor's permission to interrupt him or her and move on to the next question or rebuttal debate or discussion opportunity and if necessary penalize the candidate's time the next time he or she is asked to respond to a question. All questions to be asked came from residents of Waterloo. Sponsor representatives have been assigned to review all questions submitted by residents of Waterloo and have given our moderators the questions to ask. Due to the professional background of our moderators, they have been given the privilege to modify questions for clarity's sake should they so desire. Each of the eight city councils candidates will be allotted ninety seconds for their opening remark, one minute for their closing statement, and we ask them to keep their responses to the debate questions in sixty seconds or less with our condensed schedule, less is more. Should any candidate want to make a rebuttal comment, he or she will have to limit to thirty seconds to make their case. Moderators have the permission to stop the rebuttal commentary if they feel the issue has been sufficiently aired. Each of the eleven Waterloo residents seeking public office were mailed as well as emailed the debate schedule and debate protocol I just shared with you. Let's begin our debates with candidates from Ward Five. Our candidates Ray Foyce and Don Henry.
Hey, I'd like to welcome both of you tonight. Thank you for being here. We will start with Ms. Henry with your opening statement.
As they've said, I'm Don Henry. I'm seeking to hold the city council representative for Ward Five. I'd like to thank everyone here with the groups that has helped get this debate together. I think this really means. Waterloo is my hometown. I've grown up here. I graduated from Sacred Heart School and Columbus High School. My husband, Tim, graduated from Waterloo West. He and I have been married for forty-two years and raised our now-grown children here. Tim has worked for Mid-American Energy for forty-three years and I have retired but worked as a nurse for forty years in office and hospital settings. Waterloo is our home. I've helped with organizing my local Liberty Park Neighborhood Association. These groups are much needed in this city. Our families have enjoyed the many fun events and hope that they continue downtown such as Irish Fest, Friday Lou, and all the many other things that we all get to do. However, I feel that all of Waterloo could benefit from an improved city parks. They must meet the needs of the children and their families. There are gathering places for our neighborhood. In Ward Five, our Liberty Park is a flood zone and cannot be improved. Nearby Circus Park is nearly forty years old. Waterloo children need more activities in the summer, especially in their own neighborhoods. My ward needs necessary sewer repairs so that flooding is not a common occurrence. We need to be safe and we need to work with our police department and we also need to control our taxes and look more wisely into it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks. I first like to thank the Northern Iowa Student Government, the Cedar Falls Waterloo Branch of the American Association of University Women in the Cedar Valley Activist for scheduling this opportunity today. My name is Ray Foyce and I'm asking for your vote to continue to represent you in Ward Five. I've lived here in Waterloo for about ten years and I'm proud to call it home. I was an elementary school educator for almost sixteen years and during that time was very involved with state politics and for a few years served on the Board of Directors of the National Education Association. I had the opportunity to meet and work with our congresspeople on education-related issues. I currently work with the Iowa State Education Association, work with fourteen bargaining groups, including the Waterloo Support Staff and Teachers. I mentioned my background because it has shaped me into who I am and how I respond to concerns. I work with a very diverse group of educators who see their personal politics separate from the educational issues that they face in their classroom. I hear from citizens who have very different ideologies than me. It's important for me to allow them to communicate with me in varying ways to solve the problems. Our focus should not be on divisive rhetoric but on finding common solutions that will allow us to help move Waterloo forward. I have and will continue to not make decisions about me but about Waterloo. We have seen some record-setting building in the last three years, but it's not enough. I want us to continue that strong growth. We have a good start and we've had a great start on my time on council and I want to continue to work on those building blocks for a stronger and more inclusive Waterloo. I want to work towards attracting people and businesses and continue to build up with infrastructure in our city. And most of all, I want to continue to be that constant and civil voice on council that residents of Ward Five sought three years ago.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to start with you, Mr. Foyce. What do you see as the biggest issue in your ward?
I think, you know, I think Ms. Henry alluded to it a little bit. There are some flooding and sewer concerns that we have. However, with the four point, I'm going to get the number wrong, the four million dollars that we spent on the lift station for Dry Run Creek and the lift station is going to help that because it's going to help divert some of that water away from our neighborhood near the Liberty Park. And so we want to make sure that we have that. We need to continue to do that. I've been in discussion with city council people on a couple of ordinances that we would like to bring forth. I know we have in the past worked when we had some overflow issues in order to solve that and I would like us to continue to look at that as we go forward.
Same question, Ms. Henry.
For Ward Five, I again will say that we need parks. We need them throughout the city, but Ward Five could really use a good working park that works for a lot of the kids. Some have autism, many different things that would be age-related to the kids in the park and we have walking paths outside, things like that, which would be very helpful. We have several homes that are in disrepair and they have sat there for quite some time. The sewer concerns should have been fixed a long time ago. People regularly have water in their basement and other little items and I think that's something that I know with the Dry Run Creek that was to help, but it does not solve the problem.
Can I follow up? Thank you. I think that's been the concern in Waterloo for a long time is that the problems have been here and I think what we found is in the last three years, those of us on council who want to move forward have been able to do those things and to solve those problems that worked from ten, fifteen, and twenty-five years ago. I think that's important and that's a distinction that you need to make between we've had problems in the past, we have now had solutions, and I think that's where we want to continue to move towards is solutions.
I think we should move towards a solution. I think it should have been done quite some time ago. We can say we're working towards it, but when I knock on the doors and I talk with the people, they have flooding in their basement on a regular basis. We've had the sewer system looked at. It has been known for many, many times, years, but it's outwides. But it's time we fix it.
What is your plan of action for your first ninety days in office or your next ninety days in office? We'll start with you, Mrs. Henry.
My first ninety days in office would be spent getting to know the city hall, the departments that work here and the people and what is it that they do, what are their needs, what would they like to do differently perhaps? Just to get a handle on that as I'm not, I'm just from, you know, no verse and I have a lot to learn about how they run the city, but that would be my major goal.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sitting in a little different position because I've had the opportunity to be here on council now for three years, so, you know, I think we've had some challenges in the last year and a half with COVID and with some of the things that have taken place in our city. And frankly, I think in the next ninety days, we need to have a conversation about city and staff around and we need to have a little bit, a better understanding of some of our development agreements. Our Clara is coming up next year and I would like to have some work sessions on that with our planning and zoning departments in order to see, are we making the best choices as we're looking at some of our financial benefits that we're giving to developers?
Thank you. Speaking of morale concerns, how will you address or continue to address concerns within the police department?
I, as I mentioned in my opening statement, have the opportunity to work with a lot of teachers and support staff and I can tell you they don't always get along with their administration and in fact have had some buildings who have wanted to take votes of no confidence on their administrator and so it's not something that I recommend as a union person. Instead, what I want to do is work with the local people that are in there and what we do is we sit down, we have a conversation about it, we do a survey that's non-biased, and then we look at that and we develop a plan because not everything that an administrator or a chief does is wrong, but you also want the opportunity to make sure that the people that are doing the work are heard. And so I think by having that opportunity to look at it would be great. I think maybe doing a, coming back to the POF report that we had in two thousand and fifteen, seeing some of the things that we didn't have there could now be remedied here.
Henry?
I think we do need to listen to the Waterloo Police Department and their concerns, listen to the rank and file, see what it is they have to say. I understand there's been a survey. I haven't been able to see that at all, but I also have concerns with the fact that they aren't able to use their facility while they're on duty. They are asked to stay out in their car for the entire set of time that they're working, eight, twelve hours. I think that is an unnecessary rule that they've come up with. I think it puts our police officers at risk and I think they know it. And I just think that we should work together with everyone to see what we can come up with.
Mr. Foyce, did you want to address anything?
No, I mean, I think, you know, we could continue to do that. I think really what we need to do is just look at some of the changes that were recommended, you know, several years ago to our past police chief and our past police force and word that was implemented and are we continuing those? And if not, like, are we, do we need to like figure out a way to be able to move forward with that?
Related to the police department, please tell us what major purchases or expenditures for the police department have come up in the last two years and if you voted or would have voted for them. I'll start with you, Ms. Henry.
I understand that they have purchased weapons and body cams and some armor vests. I think that is very appropriate that they've done that. I just think that those are the best things for them.
Thank you. Mr. Foyce?
So we spent four point one million dollars on X and to give them body cameras, tasers, in-car cameras, evidence management systems, VR training. Every, I think my record is impeccable when it comes to our police. I don't think there's anything, whether it has come through the finance committee or not, that I have not supported. And I would continue to support our police department in anything that they need. We have worked, I know that they have several vehicles that have been in disrepair and not up to code what they need. And so we worked with Enterprise to give them a lease agreement for new vehicles and then we're going to continue to monitor that and allow them to have the best, the best equipment that we can afford. So we've given them a lot of money over the last two years.
Mr. Foyce, you briefly mentioned before about development agreements. How do you see the city as handling development agreements with contractors and do you think this could be improved? If so, how?
I think it's always a good idea, especially right now when we're getting out of COVID, that we should be looking at some of that. I know we've had some concerns in the past with some of our development agreements and some of the money that the city has given, so I want to make sure that we're taking more time to look at that and to make sure we're making the right decisions. I personally, I would like to see us, Waterloo doesn't need to do the giveaways. I think a long time ago, people didn't want to be in Waterloo and I don't think that's the case. I said that three years ago and I'm adamant about it now. We don't have to sell the farm. We have it. We need to look at our development agreements and to make sure we're not giving away all of our tax base that we need to and we need to get some more money into our city coffers instead of giving away the farm.
To increase the development, I think it would be great if the city could have high-speed internet. We all would like that, let alone the businesses. But as far also as we need to do our due diligence, when we want to look into a project to see if it can be completed on time, I know of one such place that has not been completed in nearly four years and it makes me wonder if the diligence was done there to see that this project would be completed in a timely manner and that Waterloo had not lost its money.
Can you tell us what you're referring to, Mrs. Henry?
I believe it's Rodney Anderson, that's the grocery store down on Franklin Street. It's in disrepair down there and he was given, I believe, a five hundred thousand dollar grant to build a grocery store. I would personally say that it would be difficult to build a grocery store in that area that is not a box store like a Hy-Vee, even a quick store. To do that, the price of doing that on your own would be very expensive and not really benefit.
Can you elaborate on this, Mr. Foyce?
One of the things that we do when we are building residential houses, we give a tax abatement of three years and I think oftentimes after about three years, we have a little bit of a sticker shack with that. And so if we can, if we can look at that and ease some of our new homeowners into, when they do their new builds, into that, I think it would be smarter because unfortunately, I think sometimes when they realize they're going to be paying several thousand dollars in taxes that they haven't budgeted for, then they're choosing to abandon that and look elsewhere. We want to make sure that that's not continuing.
How should the city deal with dilapidated houses? We'll start again with you, Mr. Foyce.
So I know we, in Ward Five, we have about two dozen, six fifty-seven properties right now and I would like to see if we can continue to find people who want to develop that. You know, the first thing is in some cases we have difficulty even tearing some of those places down because we don't have enough contractors and the workforce problems right now, it's very evident. So we want to make sure that we have that, but I think trying to find people who want to invest in their community would be good. I think one of the things possibly in Ward Five is trying to find maybe a couple of small lots and make sure that they're empty and internalized and to possibly community-sponsored gardens as well. I think that would be kind of a neat idea that we could approach as well to have people more invested. And I think when you have neighborhood associations, I think they could be a part of that and kind of have a fun, novel idea for earlier.
Thank you. Ms. Henry?
We've often talked about the homes that are there that have been there for many, many years. I know at a neighborhood association meeting a few years back, somebody from Portman Force McCamey was rather surprised to find that this house on Nine Street over there is really bad and has anyone ever looked at it? And it did take a while to get it down. They did take it down. There has to be a list, obviously, of the homes that need to be taken down and I think we should have a list and a plan in getting them removed. They've been there way too long and they don't help the property values of the people that live there and I think you would have to weigh the risk of trying to rebuild one. Anything like that would be very difficult. They're condemned, they're condemned and they need to come down. They're not safe for the children or anybody else in the neighborhood and it just makes the neighborhood look bad.
Thank you.
Can I just add with that? I think with that, we have had, you know, people that have come in and done the investment piece. Baltimore Field is a great example in Ward Five. You know, we had the former mayor come in and do some work there and we have some beautiful homes. We have Habitat that's coming in there. I know right now they're really looking at the Walnut Neighborhood and other areas, but you know, once, once we get some of those places a little bit more taken care of, you know, we have to have the investors. We don't have all of those right now and again, I know people are wanting this done immediately, but time is something we have to have.
Do you have a question?
I would just say that if the houses are condemned, they need to be brought down. I know that over my moving school, that was leveled a few years back and they went about building homes for people that had made contracts of some sort that they would pay their fees and they built a whole community there, you know, Sixth Street, over in that area, just beautiful. Those people have lived up to their agreements, so things like that are also very helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Henry, what are your thoughts on how long the process of renovating the convention center has taken?
I'd say with COVID and everything else that has gone on there, I'd say we're doing probably pretty good and getting it done in the time that we are. I know that, I'm sure that they've run into some difficulties and delays. Building materials are not easy to come by and I think they're doing just fine.
Mr. Foyce?
Yeah. I mean, I can't argue with that. The building delays, I think that's something that's happened, you know, all over. I'm, I will tell you, I'm thankful that we have it. I'm thankful that our city was committed to having this convention center and to making our community whole. I think we needed something downtown and if you haven't done the virtual tour, I had an opportunity to be inside the first floor. It's beautiful. I know we've been able to host some events down there and it's, it's going to be such a draw and attraction that I think people are going to be running to come and be a part of it. And once our plaza is done for the Sullivan Brothers, that's going to be even better. You know, we're working towards having such a great downtown and that's, that's going to be the centerpiece of it.
Do you have any thoughts on the name change?
I don't because it was done in conjunction with the Sullivan family and I think we're working to honor the Sullivans and, you know, if they're okay with it, then I'm going to be okay with it.
Ms. Henry?
I think a lot of people were kind of disappointed that the name was changing. The Sullivan Brothers have obviously brought notoriety to the Waterloo area, not in a, it's the cost of their lives, but it's been something that we've carried forward and kept their history alive. I think that would have been really nice and I can remember when the Five Sullivans was built and it was a beautiful facility and used many, many times. I've been in it many, many times. It just needed, it is falling to disrepair and just needed to be replaced or updated. Waterloo did do a good job.
Please address the twenty-four-seven Wall Street report that states Waterloo is one of the worst places for black people to live and what you would do to improve the issue. I'll start with you, Mrs. Henry.
That's a very sad thing to hear and read. I don't personally have any perfect answer, obviously, a lot of us don't, but we would have fixed this problem a long time ago. Again, I would just say though that we need to be good to each other, we need to be open, we need to have, reach out into the community with people from different, diverse areas and work with them about everything. And if we have open dialogue and honest answers, I think we can get through the bottom of this.
Mr. Foyce?
Yeah. I think we, I'm a middle-aged white male, I don't, I didn't understand, I won't understand what it's like to be a BIPOC in this community. I do know that we've had a long divide. I think we can continue to move forward. I think we've made some growth and some steps. I know we've had some council people who have taken and worked on book studies and worked with leaders in the Cedar Valley to help bridge that divide because it's not just a Waterloo concern, it's a Waterloo Cedar Falls. And I think we have to make sure that we're having that conversation. As far as what I've done, I think passing the Fair Chance Initiative, even though it's not necessarily about black and white, it's about underrepresented people at times, you know, I think that was a great step for us on the council.
I also think that we need to look at the black community and say, what can we do for you? I mean, we all need to look at the idea that they need good jobs and that they need to correct more, as much education as they can get, that makes them a more prosperous person in the community and helps them a lot to stay out of poverty and things such as that.
Thank you.
Can I, sorry?
No, please.
I'm, I think we have areas that we need to work on in all of Waterloo, not just on one side or the other. And I think we need to continue educating people on what our BIPOC are going through. I know that they only represent seventeen percent of our city, but they are one hundred percent Waterloo, one hundred percent. And we have to listen and we have to take their voices to heart and I'm very sad that we don't always recognize that we're not listening to them.
The Cedar Valley, like everywhere, is experiencing a workforce shortage exacerbated by the pandemic. What can the city do to help alleviate this workforce shortage?
Do I get to go first?
You do.
Awesome. I think that what we need to do is we, you know, and I know that we've had a council person who's looked at childcare. I think that's, that's a big barrier that we're facing. And we had Dave Swenton from ISU just recently came out and spoke about this and the three biggest areas that the workforce has hit is the twenty-four, the age twenty-four and under, women forty-five to fifty-four who are primarily in the education field and also in healthcare. And then I think the biggest thing is we've had a lot of early retirees, people who started working from home and decided home was where they wanted to be and they didn't need to necessarily be there. I don't know that we can solve a problem when we don't have enough workers to cover the jobs and I think that's something that we need to continue to strive. But we need to give those that are twenty-four and under and those, those women that are not currently working childcare an opportunity and I think the market is kind of correcting itself as we've seen wages rise.
As mentioned earlier, I believe that the mental health has become an issue, wearing the mask, not wearing the mask, the kids in school, the attitudes that parents have, you know, gained from that, whether they're for or against it. I think we need to be respectful to each other and our, and their feelings. I think we need to get them back to work by maybe, let's find out who these people are that used to work at McDonald's, so don't work there anymore. What happened to them? Do they want to come back to work? It's a national problem, it's not just a Waterloo problem. And I don't know that there's a perfect answer. I do think education and public health and that would be mainly better. If we could do a little bit more with that and reassuring people that it's safe.
Thank you.
Did you want to follow up? I, no.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Quickly though, we have to move on to closing statements.
That's okay, that's okay. My wife was a silver for ten years and made less than minimum wage. I think what has happened with this market is people who are working two or three minimum wage jobs, and I can tell you that's the Paris and, you know, the support staff in Waterloo and teachers as well that are working two and three jobs. I think people who are working two or three minimum jobs found, once the market corrected itself and we had fifteen, eighteen-dollar an hour jobs, could then have one job and spend time. could then have one job and spend time with their family. And I think that's something that they wanted. They didn't need two jobs. They needed one.
Thank you. Alright, um, closing statement time. We'll start with you, Ms. Henry.
In closing, I'd like to just say that for Ward Five, I know, I want you to know I'm here for you. I will vote after hearing from you and hearing what you have to say and your feelings. If you call or contact me, I will react and call you back, talk to you and find out what's going on. And we will resolve or follow up on the issue the best I can. I am always available to the citizens of Ward Five. And I would attend any neighborhood association meetings. Um, in this ward, they've asked. I've already been to the West Central Neighborhood Association and that was very helpful. And I'm very happy to have you there. Um, Ward Five is important to me. The city is important. Uh, we, um, I've lived here my entire married life, raised my family, and what happens here matters. We need to move forward in a positive way for all of the city. That way it helps everyone. I will bring back common sense to the city council and we can be Waterloo proud.
Thank you. Mr. Foyce?
Yeah, thank you. When I ran three years ago, I ran on stability. I feel that I've done just that. I, I've had a lot of people who don't agree with the decisions I've made. And I think for many council people, that's probably the toughest thing is to find out, you're not always right. I have taken the time, every council meeting, to figure out what we need to listen to people and to make what I deem at that time, that vote, based on the information I have, what's best for Waterloo. I don't make a vote on my emotions. I don't get riled up by things. I think it's important that we continue the building blocks. We have to attract people and businesses. We have to continue to build our infrastructure. And frankly, in order to do those two things, we have to have a council that's going to work together to be civil. And I think you, over the last three years since I've been on council, we've seen amazing growth. And I think that's why you should vote for me for Ward Five. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.